Hi, thank you, everybody. This is the work session for the City of Lake Forest Park City Council. This is Thursday, September eleventh, six P M. I'm calling the meeting to order. This is Deputy Mayor Tracy from time. I believe that we have a couple of council members as well as the mayor online. This is true city clerk complain.
I guess we have. A council member on there.
Mayor, okay. Alright, hello, Mayor. Alright, so at this point, I'd like to move the, I'd like to have somebody move the adoption of the agenda.
Someone.
Alright, they changes. Alright, by affirmation, then we adopt the agenda. Okay, so I'm gonna start off with Phillips. He's going to tell us a little bit about the Sustainable Forestry Initiative or SFI for short, the Urban and Community Forest Sustainability Grant for Forests.
Welcome. Yes, thank you very much. So the I'm here on the Chair of the Tree Board currently, and we've been kind of working on this. This. This is work that was started by our former urban forest planner Drew Eppin. She made contact with these folks at SFI Sustainable Forestry Initiative, and she started doing some, playing some groundwork for a grant. As I understand it, they really want to give us this seventy thousand dollars, and they kind of assured her, but we need to get in a real application. And I thought an agreement with them and and Drew has drafted an agreement. And Drew has took the time to draft RFP that we can use in the future if the city decides to go ahead with this. And so I included in your package just a couple of, a couple of pieces, got a piecemeal pieces from the that that agreement that's in draft form. One is a statement of grant description, which is kind of the purpose. It basically says that we value, it may not be the final form that we want to use. It's got it could probably use a little bit of tweaking. But it has been run by the the grant manager in Washington, D C, who seems okay with it, so he kind of. Close to mess with it if it gets to that point. Similarly, with this draft budget that Drew pulled together, it's been shared with with the grant manager. So those are two pieces to talk about. Sustainable Forestry Initiative started as a Canadian organization, and their primary concern over the years has been a certification process for. For forestry activities, commercial forestry activities, logging. And so they they products that they have a certification program for wood products. Certifies that they've come from, you know, wood originated in sustainable, sustainably managed forests. But they have, and I don't know when, but sometime fairly recently, I guess, they expanded into community and urban forest sustainability as well. And so they do these grants. The grant money originates with the U S Forestry Service. And it then so SFI is kind of under under contract to 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 Forest Reserve to administer these grants to manage them and administer them. The purpose, the the main purpose, and it's embedded in this little statement that I gave you with with some other reasons as to why we want to do this. But the purpose is to to use their standards. To the sixteen standards that that they published, maybe had a chance to take a look at. For urban community forestry sustainability, to use those standards to to look at Lake Forest Park. And our forest management policies and practices. And so it would identify where we're doing well, and it would identify where there are gaps and where we could, and and specifically. We'd want to look for some ways that we could improve where there where there are things that we can improve, and I'm sure there are. It will also include, and it has to include apparently, a little piece. It's called a certification pre audit. Which they say is about a five thousand dollar part of this overall grant. And with that, that sets us up, that that takes the data that they've looked at in terms of their their analysis of our forest. And 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 it sets us sets the stage for us to work further in the future. If we should decide to do that for formal certification of our urban community forest, if we should decide to do that. It was not a big agenda. It was not a big idea that Drew felt we really wanted to pursue, and it it may well not be. I do, I do think it involves another chunk of money to be able to pursue that, and I don't know what grant funding might be available to that. So, you know, on the tree board, the reason this is appealing to us, main reason is that. We have put on our work plan that we want to work on the city's community forest management plan. Which was done in twenty eleven, I believe. There was a task force that was working to update our code at that time. And they, part of their work product was a was a community forest management plan. Which has got a lot of good stuff in it, but it 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 needs to be updated. It's done in twenty eleven, things have changed, and we've got a lot more information about about our forest from several analyses can be that have been done. So, so, so we see this analysis that SFI would do would give us really a heart of that of a forest management plan. They say that they don't fund the development of forest management plans, community forest management plans. And they wouldn't have, they wouldn't, they wouldn't fund us to hire a consultant, for example, to actually put that plan together. But this process that we'd like to engage with them will in fact yield very good, very good information that we'd want in a forest management plan for Lake Forest Park. So, so that's the main interest for us. The grant money can also be used, can can be used for for public meetings, for public input. Into this plan as it says they're working on it. I don't know, that's kind of the short of it, I guess, why we would like to do this. I I'd say one other thing, I guess, is probably important to say is that there really are some contingencies involved in that that we should be aware of. First of all, if you look at the budget that documented calls for twenty two thousand of the seventy thousand, twenty two thousand to be used to support staff. And and that that still makes sense to to us on the forest on the on the tree board. It's probably something that could be negotiated or could be changed somewhat, but it gives us an opportunity to pay a. For a significant portion of our community, of our urban forest planners salary to actually. And 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 most likely, one of the things that's kind of slowed us down in terms of moving was that we have not had such a person on board until fairly recently. And that person would would be the key contact for the grant, but would be actually the person who I think the city would want to be the designated grant manager for the city. And would manage the RFP process and would manage the consultants as they as they do networkers. So, so I think one contingency is if you take out the twenty two thousand out of the seventy. You get down into the forties, it turns how much, how many thousands of dollars we have to to pursue this work. I think there's a contingency there in terms of whether we would find somebody who's qualified to do this work. Who would do it for forty two, forty three thousand. I think that is a contingency. We might, we might, might be pleasantly surprised. It does seem to be if we if we were to get in a situation where we found somebody we liked and was good to do it. But they couldn't do it for less than sixty thousand or something. We do have a tree of the tree fund that we've established over the years, and it seemed reasonable to me that we could make a draw at we. If we thought it was a reasonable draw not to 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 get the guy chopped up. You know. Another contingency, I think, is that we do have a new new urban forest manager on board, and I think that person. Who I've not met yet before, that's probably got a full plate in terms of getting on top of how we manage our forest, how we manage our tree boat. And the permitting process. So, so I I think the reasonable thing I would think was that we'd want that person to be the manager of this of this grant if we if you decide to pursue it. There's stuff to be done. We've got, although Drew has has roughed out an RFP that we could use in the future that's finalized. And the process of putting it out for biz, stuff like that. And there's a timeline issue that we need to be aware of, and maybe you already are aware of that. The the fellows that we've spoken with and Victoria Kutas and myself and Mark Hoffman had a great Zoom conversation with the person in D C. We're very impressed with him, but he's very concerned that this money could go away. It's been allocated, et cetera, but the fact is that some of those things are being brought back. New word in our vocabulary is happening. So, so what he had asked us to do in that meeting that we had, which was like a week and a half ago, was to send a letter. And I think there is a draft of that letter that's being circulated, and I don't know if Mark has had the chance to to pursue that or get it out. He would, he like, he wanted a letter from the city indicating our interest in this. And why it taken us some time to get it together, mainly because we didn't have a an urban plant, urban forest planner on board. But that that we were pursuing that and some kind of time served in which we could have that completed agreement. Somewhere along the line in there too, a, you know, obviously you'd want to have a city attorney take with our, it's it's a fairly standard. Of grant. I believe for for federal grants that is pretty extensive, and it has a lot of boilerplate information about. You know, discrimination, anti discrimination, and other kinds of things that that go with those. So there's that, there's that, that getting the attorney review. And I don't know, but following up to see if that letter got out and then following up with the development in D C to be sure that that's he's got that. And that he's able to use that with the U S Forest Service people to 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 be sure that this didn't fall away or or can go too quickly. So that's what I know. It's about everything I know about this and got it. If it's anything, questions, if. At least a chance, I don't have people to answer them.
So does anyone have any questions for Mark? Oh, sorry. Hey, Councilmember McCartney, there you are. Go ahead.
You're muted.
Okay, Councilmember McCartney, if you can hear us, feel free to buzz in at any time. I'll now open it up to everybody else. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Phillips?
Oh, there you go.
I think she's saying that she needs. Clerk we claim to unmute her, okay. Is she, is she a analyst? Well, we're working on this.
She's saying that she said the Zoom says she doesn't have access.
Oh. I. I wonder if it's just because she's on her phone. But you're.
Maybe.
Yeah, so.
I I I'm on my phone, yeah.
Okay. That's, I wish you could text it, I question, yeah. Oh, curse those new iPhones, okay.
There's, there's a bunch of stuff in the chat.
Let me tell my.
Yeah, in the meantime, the council.
As your, go ahead.
Right, so the first question I think is for Mayor French. Have you signed that letter to SFI? With our interest?
Uh, I'd have to review it. I don't think so. I don't think it has been signed yet. I'd have to check with Director Hoffman on that one. There's several things that came across. If it was a physical copy, no, I have not. I apologize about my voice. I'm. Pretty hoarse here. I can check here, Larry, and make sure.
Then he's. Presenting the, that's not inside. It was presented Tuesday, but I see this is been really obvious this week. And my second question, so Tree Board Chair Phillips, you mentioned that there's some urgency from SFI to accept this money, which they have essentially offered us. But once we've accepted it, how long would we have to carry out the project?
We have one year. Okay, we would have one, and it would likely be set up, so it was January first to December third.
Okay, so there's some urgency to accept the money, but once we have the money in hand, then we have, we can take a more deliberative approach to the project itself.
Yeah, we conceivably start the RFP process for the.
And quick, but then have we got Councilmember McCartney back?
No, just for above.
Oh, no, okay. Well, well, for the sake of folks reviewing this tape, then Councilmember McCartney especially, if you have a question. Chair Phillips, would you be willing to answer a question offline?
I'm sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody? Just one more. Make sure.
Oh, yeah.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, just to confirm, I mean, I know the answers, I believe, is on the tree board, but at least the tree board supportive of this initiative.
Yeah, we've talked about it in a couple of our meetings, and of course, we talked about it with several times with Drew, as she was kind of formulating it. And at our last meeting, we formally voted to 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 pursue this and ask the city to pursue it. And I'm sure there would be help from the tree board members. There are a couple of people, all of whom are talented, but I'm sure there some would be willing to be helpful if there's some ways that. That that we can be, just for this.
Thank you. So, I, since nobody else seems to have a question, I've got one. It's you've mentioned that we have our new urban forest planner, Sam Cole. Is he on board with this?
I haven't had a chance to talk to him, I. I, yeah, I. I hoping to meet him soon, and I I'm assuming that he's been briefed in a number of things that are going on, and if he needs, if you need, I can help. Obviously, bring him up to date on this. Do that. Okay, great.
All right, well, it's wonderful. And then my last question is, what do you need from council at the moment?
Well, really not too much, I don't think, except to try to get that letter out quickly, and then if and then to bring a. If I think the way you probably want to do it is to ask Mr. Cull to be the the manager for that grant, so to get him on board. Quickly and and have him start talking with the manager, the grant manager at D C. There are, there are a couple of documents floating around. I don't think I didn't include in what I shared with you. There's a thirty five page draft of the agreement that's out that. You can take a look at, and I guess another thing would be to ask Attorney Pratt to review that if she hasn't yet. I guess some things to be sure about that, I, as I've read it, and a non lawyer, as I have read the draft. There's, there's no penalty for us if this should fall through at some point. We expend money, and it should fall through, would be hard for us to get that money back, I think, but. But if before we get going, it doesn't fall into place, and that's what I, I think one of the things the attorney would obviously want to be clear about, what would be exit provisions both for SFI for us.
So Director Hoffman and Attorney Pratt will be reviewing the contract. The goal is to have it on the twenty fifth. For council review and proving the mayor to enter into that contract. But I think the contract sits with Kim's waiting time, so there's some copy for you to review, so it would be looking at two touches. In order to grasp federal funds means they're committed, as we found with our other federal funds. Get to hold on to those.
Yes, well, I understand the sense of urgency too, so thank you very much for presenting. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the city to get some outside expertise and draft a new. Forest management plan, but that's a, you know, can't understand, understate that enough, since how old is our current?
Well, twenty eleven is the date on it, so it was put together, then it's. It's partly a report from that committee's work and partly a plan, so. I think it could be made fully a plan and updated, because as I mentioned, you know, a lot of stuff has gone on with our forest.
Yep, fifteen years is a long time for a forest. Absolutely. Alright, thanks.
Good, thank you.
Alright, shit. So Deputy Mayor, Councilmember, oh, Kurt. Oh, sorry, so, okay, so, so Chair Phillips, if you could stick around for just a second, so, Councilmember McCartney, are you there?
I'm here. That was exciting. Sorry.
There you, there you go. Want to answer your question, go ahead.
Oh, great, thank you. I think I missed, somebody had asked it, because when I came in, I heard the word exit strategy. That's what I was wondering about. Given the timing and then the duration of the project, and if the funds were to all of a sudden not be available, or or what, what does that look like and what kind of timeline? But it sounds like you touched on that. The other thing I was just hoping to confirm, so I heard the seventy thousand, part of that seventy thousand can be paid for a staff salary. And in the event that the cost for a bid goes over the remaining funds, did I hear correctly that there is a current, that you have a current fund from Tree? That you can cover any discrepancy between the RFP cost and the bid cost and and whatever the, whatever the grant might not cover?
Well, yes, I, thank you, Councilmember. I, it's. We'll have to see, I guess, how far forty five thousand goes with a consultant in terms of doing that work. If there's some negotiation and we can see a a total, an amount for that contract that's not going to break our bank. You know, there is, there is, there are some funds available through our tree fund. And it might be that we would, the city could decide to use that to to bridge any gap that might be there. And I don't even know what the amount of that fund is now, but I I think it's a fairly decent amount.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Appreciate it.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll be hearing about this anon. So we move to topic B, which is Resolution twenty five, twenty, twenty twenty eight. Authorizing the mayor to sign a public works contract agreement with Johansson Construction Company for the S R one oh four and forty eighth place Northeast Roundabout Project. And that will leave one of these three is presented.
Well, I'll take the lead.
Okay.
How's that? There's no formal presentation during the work session.
True.
Council should have received spreadsheet from Director Dickinson with all the council questions that have been posed and responses to those. We have a few late questions that we didn't get out, you know, some members leave, and so I thought I could, we could take some time right now to. Answer those three questions for the the whole, because you don't have those in that document. And then we thought we could use the rest of the time here to. Answer any questions you haven't asked heretofore or clarify anything that maybe we didn't explain, quite how you it. Wasn't enough information for you. So, first question from Councilmember Levo was, as you remember, we have the Public Works Board loan. We had that, we had. From council to accept that, we accepted that the amount of two million dollars. You've seen the gender cover sheet that we're eligible to up to two point five million dollars, so. Phillips has gone back and asked for that. That has been approved by their board and just would be waiting for this contract to be approved. And then they would send forward a contract to approve that amount up to two point five rather than two million. The question beyond that was, what is the debt service for that? That comes out of the one oh four fund. This is the TBD fund. You remember back in twenty three, twenty four, biennial budget council adopted a point one percent sales tax and increased the. Tap fees by official ten dollars. The estimated increase in revenue is two hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars per year at the time, based on two million dollar loan and the one point seven two percent interest that. That loan carries for a term of hundred twenty months. Our annual debt service was two, just under two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So two hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars, even with another five hundred thousand dollars, there is capacity within that to prepay that over the ten year term of.
Yes. I'm sorry, the anticipated revenue was two hundred and fifty nine.
Two hundred and fifty nine thousand.
And the annual debt payment would be.
Two hundred and seventeen and eighty thirty five was calculated at the two million. I haven't calculated today at two point five million.
I'm, I'm just, I just want to say, and I'm going to ask a whole bunch of questions. I'm really having a hard time following. And not having a clear breakdown is just been really difficult.
I think you'll find in the presentation, we've tried to clear.
Can you share the presentation before we get to meeting so that I can have something to look at, because I'm sorry. It's hard for me to follow presentations and think about what's going on without having something.
Yeah, we can see, I think it's sitting up on the days right now, so they've been printed. We can grab one for you.
So it's going to be hard for me to ask those questions if they might otherwise be answered in the presentation, because. I I still can't follow the numbers, even though I've looked at.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, do you have, is that the presentation?
Well, I only have my.
Okay.
Copy that.
Eighty cent run. Presentation for it, I can walk through that. Um, so while we wait for that. One of the other questions, I miss, skip over the T I B Executive Director. We do have confirmation that they will grant these for three hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. So if you remember, T I B had given us. The grant, the executive director has the ability to give an increase, and it's a percentage rate for that total sooner eighty four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. We have been insured by the executive director that that will be granted, but. He's not going to do the paperwork until the contract is in place, so. Once the contract is in place, that would be done. We have until July of twenty twenty six for this for construction to begin. To keep all those dollars for T I, from T I B in place, so we had. Milestones that we had to hit was that by July first of this year, we had to have project out for bid. We met that requirement. Our next milestone is July sixth, construction has to be got to still remain eligible for the grant that we've already received and the additional three hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. That he can sign without board approval, so those dollars. Approved, but not in hand, that I believe there are reimbursement, so. So it'll be reimbursed to the city as we spend those those dollars. And then the last question was about ending fund balance for the Traffic Safety Fund O two, which Director Bond put together. This is at the end of this existing biennium. Of three point nine million dollars. Transportation Benefit District at one point four million, and the Transportation Capital Fund at two point, just under two point four million. And as you look through the funding structure, you see these are all paying for a portion of that. The question of council member, were there any future scopes of work? For which this money was already anticipated. Which is maybe was already anticipated for is truly unallocated, nor we foregoing any projects. I looked in the twenty five, twenty six budget out in the twenty twenty six C I P, we have two projects that were identified that would come out of. Technically, it's the Transportation Capital Fund, but that is the O two fund paying into the Transportation Capital Fund. To begin the thirty percent design drawings for the two walkway projects around Lake Forest Park Elementary and Brookside Elementary. So beyond those two projects, which is around seven thousand dollars. Out of the ending three point nine million in Traffic Safety Fund, there's nothing else planned at this point in time. Council could make decisions to do other things with those funds during this biennium, additional traffic studies for. Traffic cameras, et cetera, but those are the only two projects within this biennium that we haven't begun, because we don't have a senior project manager. So those were the. Follow up three.
I have a question.
So, Councilor, good.
So if this project goes forward, who will be the project manager? Are you going to manage that in house, or is that something that we would hire outside to do?
So we have the construction manager that we brought on recently to do kind of managing all the utility work outside. But we would split the responsibilities in how you can.
Do they have, I'm, does the other person have experience with managing a project of this size?
Yeah, I think it was thirty years of consulting experience, I mean, specific transportation related projects.
He's a professional engineer, my trade. Are there any other questions?
Fine, right, I still can't follow the numbers in terms of what is city funds for this project versus what are grant funds? Because one of the things, though, is that a loan is like your mortgage, the bank doesn't pay your loan. You actually have to pay your own mortgage, so that's your fault. But it's not fair to me how much the city is contributing to this project. As opposed to grant funds, because the numbers are different all through the responses and the staff before. Because one might represent, for example, this is going to be shown to the public, the city funding has one point eight billion dollars. But that doesn't represent actually how much the city is contributing to this project. I can't figure out what that number is, because I see in some. I see in some locations, we've got a three point three million dollar grant, I see other locations where the seven three, seven million dollars. If the total grant values three point seven million dollars on an eight point six million dollar project, that roughly. Looks at to make four point five million dollars. I don't see four point nine million dollars represented in any of the materials that we've received today as being a cost to the city. So I I'm I'm looking for clarity of. What the city is contributing. What is the grant money? And I've heard different things about, we've spent half a million dollars in grant money. But it's represented that we've spent a million dollars of local funds, so does that mean we've spent like five million dollars? And I see, depending upon what I look at, the contingency is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the project with. Seven point five million dollars at fifteen percent, and now it's eight point six million dollars, fifteen percent, still seven point, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I asked for a budget, and I, I haven't received a budget to know. Where we're spending the money on this project. So I I'm just, I I I can't follow any of this, and I. Met with you and said, well, I didn't account for the contingency, and that's the reason I have an increase for now, and now I hear that that money wasn't included in the budget. And if you increase the construction value by one point one million dollars to go from seven point five to eight point six. Where are you coming for the additional contingency? That you would, uh, well, we've saying seven hundred and fifty thousand is actually all I need to previously count, or where's the sales tax increase that do otherwise? The numbers do not match anywhere. I I I I've never seen a presentation like this for a construction project. I I've always gotten bit tab engineers estimate and 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 the budget. There is no budget here, we we would never present it. To a.
So to the project funding slide, I believe everything is on there that identifies, so. Your total of city funds is a two point five million dollars in public works for. And the one point eight million in city funding below. For a total of four point three of the seven point five million. Now granted, the overall project is eight point six million, one point one of that, almost one point one of that has already been expended in design, but we're showing tonight. And what is um, being requested is for construction of the project, and so the project funding. Is listed here, this is what we have to pay for the project. And the previous slide, um. Are the expenditure showing the right away acquisition, which has been authorized but not executed. The construction management costs. Which um, council authorized and they have begun doing work. The lowest responsible bidder amount of five point four million. And then the project, see of seven, uh, of eight hundred thousand for a total of seven five sixty oh eighty eight. There's a slight delta between, there's a little bit more funding than cost, just because as. The traffic safety fund O O two, transportation benefit district and capital fund were brought in there, it's brought in a deep in numbers. But it's roughly thirty five thousand dollars more than it's.
I I'm sorry, this is not a project expenditure spreadsheet, you haven't spent this money. And this is not a project funding spreadsheet, this doesn't represent the. The funding for the project or the allocation of the funding, and for us to say to the public. This contribution is one point eight million dollars, treating a loan, no, we're saying that it's four point three million, it's the two point five million public works board loan into one point eight. And and.
Yeah, I guess we should have said total public works for. City funding, I don't. The the fact of the matter is, it's four point three million that the city is into this project for the remaining seven point six.
Counselor, may I caution you, you know, I I'm, I'm getting lost with your questions, because I see a fairly clear thing here, so can you sharpen your questions so that? So I'm also to clarify, I think the the part of the confusion might be because there's two numbers which by coincidence are nearly the same. One of those is the one point one million dollar increase in cost from the engineer's estimate to the bid. And the others, the approximately one million dollars that we have already spent to date on design. And so is that why the project funding sheet says seven point six million? While the total project cost is eight point six, because that's taking into account that we've already spent one million dollars off the design.
Correct, we are not here tonight asking council for eight point six million, we're asking for project funding. Well, we're asking for approval of a contract of five point four million dollars, we're showing the total costs. What this will cost with right away acquisition, management costs, the bit of five point four million roughly, and anticipated project contingency. And then on the next slide, we're showing how those dollars. Are being brought into the project. As far as an actual project budget, I think you could find that in the big documents in the contract. Now, that, those are the expenditures, I I don't know what extra you're looking for as far as a project budget. These are the dollars that are allocated towards this project.
Oh, um, counsel, my word, go ahead.
Yeah, I think there's a distinction between what. Documentation is is appropriate for project managers at that level and that level granularity. From an oversight. Point of view, I find this adequate in order to understand. The large rough numbers of what is coming out of our coffers and where it is coming from. Um, the only piece is the two point five million, we've had it allocated where that's coming from, but. Um, we'll pay that in increments as a loan would be, uh, so I mean, I guess from my perspective as an oversight, I can see where all the buckets of money are. I don't need to see anything more granular than this, because I'm not a project manager, it's project. So I think this clears it up for me quite a bit.
Definitely.
This is an eight point six million dollar project, and what's not represented here is how you can show. How much of that eight point six million dollars is city? Contribution versus grant contribution. I understand that you can show on one page, we've spent a billion dollars and we have seven point five million dollars to to support, you've spent one point one million for evidence. And you've got seven point some odd million to spend, if you add those together, you can get this, but when you have a presentation like this, it's an eight point six million dollar project. And so to talk about the construction as well, it's a five point four million dollar bid. That's. That's a, that's a contractor's bid, but the project value, that's a construction contract, project value is eight point seven million dollars, and there's no clear. Page or spreadsheet that shows eight point six million dollars, here's how much we've got grant funding. Here's how much is a city contribution, and you can show. Uh, how much we've expended and show how much you have to spend, that's great, but it's an eight point six million dollar budget. And how much are, is the city contributing to that budget? You do, if I'm hearing you say it's four point three million dollars. But. You're you're only focusing on the monies that have left to be spent, not the fact that it's an eight point six million dollar project. And to represent the loan as not city funds. Is not an accurate representation to the taxpayers, because you can read this document, we can interpret that they're contributing one point eight million dollars. That's not true, that's not correct.
Understand that, and. That's an oversight on how this was laid out, but the fact of that, real, it's for construction, the city is important, three million dollars for this project. I don't know if you can answer on what's been spent today, it's all ranked. Dollars.
Um, I think it was, yeah, okay, I I was gonna ask, I have a spreadsheet similar, I was asking for. Yeah, sharing that at this level.
So, um, what, what I think you're asking is that on the design, I'm gonna speak just to the design portion, is that okay? In addition to this, the about one point. Um, it's just over one million dollars, and to date, what we've received back. In reimbursement for those design funds through two different buckets of money. Transportation Improvement Board funds is four hundred and fifty six, eight eighty five. And then from the state, WASTOT has reimbursed ninety three thousand two hundred and twenty eight, totaling five hundred and fifty, uh, about five hundred and fifty thousand one thirteen. Those are, that is reimbursed, that is a revenue reimbursement for the design cost. That we have spent of about a million dollars currently to date, so about half of it has been spent and reimbursed. That's a part of your question. Or was there, is there way more of your question that needs, that's outstanding?
Then the question is, that one million dollars that has been spent. Is that fully reversed grant dollars, or is there a portion of that that is city?
That's, okay.
If if she has a spreadsheet that would somewhat answer his, uh, John's questions, could you bring it out? Or is it too huge?
It's like more than twenty tabs, so to get to the like high level.
Okay.
That's more reliable.
Yeah, I mean, I I understand the interest in understanding the total project cost, but the authorized. The design, the design is spent as oversight, that's a closed issue. We can't undo, we can't unring that bell, but. So I I'm not at all concerned that that's not thoroughly addressed in here, because that is a completed piece of this project. It's oversight, that's done. So, I mean, if we want to get more granular in it, I I think that's. An exercise, but I I'm not concerned. Because we did all of this back when we approved. That 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 design dates.
I I think what the concern is. Um, is that. The total project, I mean, we're looking at a project that it's gonna be a deliverable, here is the roundabout. So it would be important to know what all of those costs are, here are the total costs, whether they've been expended or not. It could be as simple as a spreadsheet like what you've already done, but you could have had. You know, a section, these are grant funds, these are these funds, these are these funds, and that that totals the estimated eight point six million. I I I understand what uh, my colleague wants, and I understand what you're saying. Uh, but I do think that it is important to look at it, because the information that was sent to us. Or that we discussed uh, in our, in our Zoom meeting last Thursday, it talked about the whole thing. So we we were just, you know, we were presented with information on an eight point six million dollar thing. So, uh, I I I mean, that's. What I see. I don't think it's completely unreasonable to ask that.
But I'm playing, is there any way we can, I I know we're gonna do this next hour, but is there any way to put this up on screen for the folks to know? Yeah, thanks. Also, is councilor Saunders having any questions? So yes, I apologize, council member Saunders, did you have any questions?
Sorry, I'm having a hard time with my wifi, I I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, no, I am, uh, I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
Hey. Great. Alright, uh, does anyone else have any questions? Okay, just making sure, just to kind of summarize where we're at from the last time council took action on this. Uh, previously, when we were going out to bid, that was for the seven point five million, so there's the one point one million dollar delta. And so am I correct that of that one point one million, five hundred thousand will be covered through the increasing D T I B loan? And then the remainder will be spread out among the O O two traffic safety fund, uh, the one oh four and the three oh two, and I'm blanking on which one of those is. Car tabs and which one of those, but am I correct that the full one point one million will be spread out among those four buckets?
Yeah. Yes, so yes, the the traffic safety fund, you are correct.
Okay, um, I mean, in my mind, that satisfies my concern of making sure that the cost overrun has been fully allocated, and so that that does address about any of my concerns, so thank you. So the reason I asked that, uh, the clerk put this uh, slide up on screen is because um, as uh, council member Lee will play it out, it is an eight point six million dollar project, and you've seen the bottom number there being about seven point six billion. So there's obviously a million difference, and my understanding is, just to reiterate again, um, that that extra one million dollars has already been expended in terms of design.
Correct.
Okay, and that that money is. Directly paid by the city, uh, we're not necessarily expecting any kind of grant to repay us for that.
Uh, I'm gonna circle back on what I I said just a little previous uh, in this meeting. Yes, the city has received T I B grant, grant funding and from the state or some of those design dollars. That's why in this slide, you're seeing the description as the remaining transportation. So there is a delta, I want to be clear that we, the city has some, received some funds in grant reimbursement for the design dollars. And maybe I didn't state it very clearly on my first round, but the amount of the about million that has been spent to date. There is about a million and forty six thousand. To keep it a round number, uh, the five hundred and fifty has been reimbursed between, um. The WASTOT and the Transportation Improvement Board, therefore, the other four hundred and ninety five thousand. Again, that's just the delta of taking the budgeted amount of the one four, one million and forty six thousand. That will be this city's portion of the allocation they are going to pay for design. So therefore, you can say that. We've been reimbursed more than fifty percent.
So to complete my line of reasoning, then, the two point five million that's up there for total public works board loans. The one point eight million that the city is already, or was intending to pay out of those different funds for the construction, and the. Um, roughly, let's say, six hundred thousand that uh, we are being reinforced first for, for the designs, the design costs.
Five hundred.
A five hundred, that totals in my mind anyway, doing math on TV again, four point eight million dollars, and that is the city's exposure to this project.
Correct, how much?
Four point eight million.
Because we've expended five hundred thousand city funds for it.
Right, but there's not. But when I read the staff report. This is an eight point six million dollar budget. We are trying to be stewards of the money for the public. And when we put up slides that say the project funding is seven point five million dollars. We are not accurately conveying to the public that this is an eight point six million dollar budget. I understand we've spent money. I mean, it's like buying a house, if you put down a twenty percent down payment on a million dollar house, eight hundred thousand dollars to to. Take out this loan and pay for, you don't go around telling people it's an eight hundred thousand dollar house. Because I've already paid two hundred thousand dollars in debt, I mean, it's a million dollar house. This is an eight point six million dollar project, and so my, my, what I, what I'm trying to express is that we are not representing to the public. How, what the value of this project is, where the money's coming from, there's nowhere in here that you will see that the city's contribution to this project is four point eight billion dollars. To represent that the loan is somehow separate from the city's, the tax, city, local city taxpayers' cost is not. Not being fair to our taxpayers. They will walk away from this thinking this is a seven point five million dollar project, of which the city is only contributing one point eight million dollars, because that's what that slide says. I've never seen anything like this. I would expect to see a a tabulation that says this is an eight point six million dollar project. We've expended of that eight point six million dollars, one point one million, we've got seven point five to to spend. And and over here, here's our fund sources. It's four point three million dollars from the city, and the remainder of four point three million dollars from grants. There's no way you can figure that out in this. As a taxpayer, I'm walking away thinking, I got a seven point five million dollar project, seven point six. And I'm only having to contribute one point eight million dollars, that's a great return on our investment. When you say that back, the city's contribution is fifty percent, you cannot figure that out in any of. And the numbers do not match from one presentation to the other. This is a.
We'll take that as a lesson learned of this, I think basically, yes, the numbers could have been clearer, but uh, you know, the fact is that we've just now hopefully explained to everyone, and we'll explain again next hour. What's going on, and the fact that the city outlayed four point eight million on an eight point six million dollar project, hopefully it'd be very clear at that point. So. I I'm hoping that satisfies, I mean, it'll be, you know, I I don't know anything else I could say, okay, so we need to go upstairs, councilman.
I I'm hoping that satisfies, I mean, it'll be, you know, I I don't know anything else I could say, okay, so we need to go upstairs, council member Brittle, can you summarize in about a minute?
Oh, can this slide be updated before we get upstairs?
Please make try.
Certainly try, I appreciate your.
Okay, council members. I would like to respectfully offer a counsel point, um, the agenda item before us tonight is signing a contract with the construction company. And so I think it's completely reasonable for us to be focusing on future construction costs since that is what we as council will be voting on. Appreciate them.
I confer.
Okay, I agree, but it needs to be in the context of the project budget, it says that I can support a contract for five point four million dollars. It's really have to start from, I I need to increase the budget from seven point six to eight point five million dollars, so I can support a contract award five point four million dollars. You don't do it backwards, it says, I can, I can. I can afford two hundred thousand dollar down payment, but I can't afford to make the payments on the eight hundred thousand dollar. You gotta start with, how do you support a million dollar house? This is why the eight point six. This is, this is not.
I I wish that, the customer believe, and I'm just reminded of the wisdom of Jimmy Buffett at this point, breathe in, breathe out, let's move on. So we'll see upstairs in a ten minutes, meetings.